All right, so let's start with attendance. Let's see, Carolyn Coffey?
Carolyn Coffey here.
Steve Brown?
Brown here.
Sarah Peace?
Sarah Peace here.
Brooke Jewell?
Brooke Jewell here.
Elaine Breslow?
Elaine Breslow here.
And Catherine Harvey is here. So we are missing Megan Brynsey, who I think is intending to join us, Catherine O'Callaghan, who I think is also intending to join us. And, oh, here's Megan.
And Mary Lou.
And Mary Lou. Let Megan come in. I don't know if she can hear us. Hi, Megan.
Hi.
We were just finishing up attendance, so Megan Brynsey is here as well.
Here.
Great. Okay, so did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes. Move to approve.
I have a, I have a small amendment, which I already shared, I already shared it with Bronwyn, but it was just in the paragraphs in the Chair's report about the outdoor programming space, that I was at the meeting as well, and that Catherine H., not Catherine O., was going to follow up with landscape architects.
I think it's already changed. I fixed it in the drive.
You fixed it, reposted? Okay. Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Try not, try to be a little less efficient, Bronwyn.
Exactly. You're just overly efficient. I just wanted to make sure that it was reflected. But, so, all good.
Okay, so everybody has seen. Okay, so, all in favor of approving the minutes for the January meeting? All right, motion carries. Okay, so I think that goes to you, Megan. Is that right?
Yes. Okay. Let me share my screen. So I don't have, oops. I don't have too much to share, but a few things to talk about. So I do have some exciting news. With Amaryam's retirement, I have been asked to take over as the Director of Community Services. So I will be first and foremost Library Director, but I'll also be overseeing the other departments, Recreation, Elder Affairs, Safe Harbor, and Veterans. So I'm really excited about this. I think it really speaks to the library as a department in a leadership role, and that we really came forward during COVID. And we have a great team, and I think this is going to be really nice added relationships that we can build through this, through this new opportunity. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I started working on the Library Strategic Plan for the upcoming years. I've been working with Catherine O'Callaghan. Just going through kind of what our process is going to be. So the first part of our process is creating a community survey to go out to our library users and our non-library users, really more specifically, to be honest, because we want to find out why they're not coming and, you know, what, what we can offer that'll draw them in. So I've come up with a very drafty draft, and the staff have looked it over as well and given some feedback. So if you have some time, I would appreciate your feedback as well, whether it be right now or, or an email later. Either way would be fantastic. Anything to discuss about this survey right now? If not, I'll move on. Okay. The next thing I'd like to discuss is the possibility of getting new vending machines. So the vending machine that we have in our community room was there when I started, when I worked at the library in 2012. So it's, it's done its time. It's frequently broken. It's caused a lot of kind of aggravation for the circulation staff. It's also very popular and empty very often, or, or it's jammed, but... So we're hoping to add some new vending machine with snacks and an additional vending machine that would have bottled drinks in it. So the snack machine, the proposed snack machine would look and be the same dimensions of this, as the snack machine that we have now, just an updated version, and it would have six rows of snacks instead of three rows of snacks and three of drinks. We're proposing to move the Friends book sale down. And then add one of these machines. These are the two different looks that they have that they felt were kind of the, the most muted when it comes to the drink vending machines. And so we were hoping to add one of these for bottles. And next to the current vending machine, we have done all the measurements. Also, fully food service came in and remeasured. We do, I do understand that we have an indent in the wall, but the drink machines width is such that it won't stick out. It's much thinner than the snack machine. So I'm reaching out to you to have a conversation about the vending machines and to talk a little bit about the, the look of them and what your thoughts might be.
Can you just refresh my memory about whether we actually make any money off these vending machines, or is it?
We do.
We do, okay.
So we make about 100, well, last quarter was 125, Bronwyn? Was that for the quarter? Yeah. So not a ton.
Not a huge amount.
No, not a huge amount. We're also seeing a lot more traffic with the drinks now that the basketball court is out back. A lot of the teens are coming in to essentially raid the vending machines. We are running out of drinks frequently, which is, we're just trying to keep up with supply and demand.
And can, can we fill it also, or do we have to have the vendor come in and refill it?
They come in and fill it for us.
So adding the vending machine, the drink vending machine, how, in terms of our monthly or quarterly pricing for that, how does it? I mean, I think it's a great service. I think, obviously, it's utilized. We don't have a cafe yet. So I'm just wondering, you know, does it, does it greatly add to an expense having the drink, you know, the drink vending machine separate, or how does that fit?
So we are not charged for the vending machines. They get their profit from, they get a profit from the snacks and the, and the drinks. So this is all free to us. We don't rent the machine. We don't pay for the products that go in. So essentially, we're only making money from them, not very much, but there's no cost to us, and it's a service to our patrons.
Is there any way to take advantage of the folks that are coming in to use it to get them to stay? I don't have any ideas, but anybody else have any ideas about how we might, maybe if we, there's no way of locating the vending machines in the reading area at the other end of the building?
That's, I like that idea. I don't know if there is space for them more on the floor. I think when they were installed too, the idea was that we would prefer for people to have their snacks and drinks in the community room. I know they do wander sometimes, but not as often, I think, as we would assume that they do. People do tend to sit in there and have their snacks. Then they tend to, to go back out to the basketball courts, you know, so they don't really, unless they, unless it's a really hot day and they're here for the air conditioning as well, and then they'll go play computer games too for a little while, so they'll cool down have their snacks and their drinks and enjoy the, the computers, and then off they go again, but...
So what if we, what if we create a scavenger hunt? So that you, you somehow, there's like every, you know, once a week, there's something hidden in, in the YA room, in one of the books, or whatever it is, and then you get a free drink next time you come in.
Great idea.
That is a great idea. We'll give you a free drink if you go do this in the library. That's great, Elaine. I really like that.
Shield some books.
That's a fantastic idea. I, I would say the only thing I don't like about it, I love that this is a service that we're providing, and it's incredibly useful, and it speaks to, you know, the basketball courts and the playgrounds and getting the kids in and all of that. I don't love us being purveyors of plastic bottles. I just feel like I have to say that. I mean, I don't know whether there's still a thing such as vending machines that have aluminum cans in them, but if there are, I would say that would definitely be my preference, but other than that, you know.
Catherine, we could build on that idea. I know the Yacht Club has a dispensing system that's paper cups. And again, I'm going back, the paper cups are going to be in the reading room, please.
I agree with you. I like the can idea actually as well. The reason I picked bottles is because they have tops, and I know there's been concerns in the past about spilling. But that also, you know, so it's, but I understand the environmental concern, too.
Yeah, they're just so reliably recyclable and, you know, it's a smaller quantity too, so it's sort of easier to consume, but you know, that's my only, that's the only thing I would say. I don't know whether it's even feasible to, to have an alternative to the 20-ounce plastic bottles, but...
They have the, you know, the Everybody Water. Sorry to jump in, but I know it's more, probably more expensive than probably the, the bottles that you can get from the vending machine. Do you guys know that it's in the cardboard, almost like a milk carton? So something like that would be an option, but I don't know what the pricing would be. And they're local. It's like a local business out of Elm Court.
Right.
See, Carolyn? The high, the high school recently put in hydration stations where you can use your own bottle and, you know, the way they have them in airports, which might be something to consider instead of our water fountains. And that way, you know, most of the kids have things in their backpack, you know, that they brought to school or whatever, and, and may opt to do that. Just about, I don't know what's involved or how expensive it is, but I know they did it at the high school, and they did it as part of their conservation corps.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like that idea a lot. I don't know if it's a, if it's something that we would do instead of, but...
No, not instead of. I would say in addition to. Yeah, no, in addition to, but it might, it might contract the number of bottles that get used.
Yeah. I can look into that. I think Ted had one installed like right before COVID downstairs, so he might be able to give me an idea of what the price was.
In answer to your question, I think it's great. I think that if, if the vending machine is getting used a lot and is empty a lot, so that people are disappointed that this makes perfect sense, and thank you for having an eye toward making it not quite as garish as it might otherwise be, and I'm all for it.
And, and these would be healthy snacks, correct? Healthier snacks?
Now, I wouldn't say they were super healthy. There are some healthy options, but I would say there are some unhealthy options as well. But I think now that we're able to expand, right now we only have three rows, so we have fairly limited options. We will keep an eye on some healthy options and see if they, see if they go.
Any chance of adding lemon squares?
Is it going to be homemade, or? That should be on you. Homemade lemon squares. Part of the new community service director position is lemon squares. Okay. Thank you. So I will move forward with that, and I will look towards some pricing for the hydration station. Thank you. Okay. And so two last things. I'm hoping everybody had a chance to take a look at the, the loan agreement for the Historical Society artwork. I will pull it up. It's fairly cookie cutter. I did send it to our contract experts and ask them to take a little bit of a closer look. So Elaine, if you don't mind sharing your thoughts on, on the contract?
Well, I think Catherine and I both kind of felt that, you know, of course, you want the library's interests to be protected. And so in the event that there is, and again, I don't know the answer to this. I would imagine the town itself has insurance. Should there be, you know, goodness forbid that there's a fire or some kind of, you know, damage to these works. The, the language is basically saying, we need to take care of them in the condition in which they were presented to us. Fair enough. You know, what happens, you know, again, Catherine and I had a thought, you know, what happens if something is vandalized? What happens if somebody actually takes one of the works? Now, I understand that they don't have a, a very rich fair market value, but that doesn't mean that they're not valuable to the Historical Society. You know, they may not be replaceable. It may, you know, I, I don't know. So I would just make sure that we would be not placing them in the study rooms where, you know, it's just less, we can't really supervise what's happening in there. And then my other question, so that's, that's basically it. And, and there was mention that we become bailies. What a balee is basically, right? Catherine, from like your first year in law school, pretend the library is a restaurant, and we have a coat check. So we're responsible, so to speak. We are, you know, responsible for those coats that get checked. So I suppose there is some, you know, liability. Again, I, you know, barring any traumatic horrible thing happening, you know, it just seems like it's, you know, it is what it is. The other language I was, which I didn't really think about until just now or a few moments ago, was there's mention of impartial consideration. Well, what's the, you know, why partial? Like, what is the rest of, what's the rest of it, you know?
Yeah, I, I struggled with the consideration part of it too, because we're not really giving anything in return. But, so that's...
Yeah, they're asking us to make sure we give them credit. But other than that, they're not really enumerating. What else is, you know, what else is consideration is, you know, like what you pay and what you return, what you, not necessarily pay, but what, you know, the give and take within a contract, you know, what are you getting and what are you giving?
I mean, I, so I think that the, there are a couple of ways to look at that. So I, I wondered whether it was sufficient consideration, if it was considered, if, it was deemed for some reason not to have been adequate consideration to make the contract, then that basically challenges the enforceability of the agreement, which actually plays to our favor in the event that something were to happen to one of these works of art or pieces, or however we're describing them, while it's in our custody. And just getting back to the bailment issue, they, when we inquired back to the Historical Society about not enumerating what our liabilities might be, they sort of relied on what would be sort of the common law of bailments, which basically says, if you're holding something for somebody else, you're responsible if anything happens. So that's sort of how it stands, as Elaine very eloquently described. And yeah, like, they said there's no real fair market value, but yeah, if somebody finds it irreplaceable, then do we find ourselves in a situation where we have to, you know, figure out how to quantify that value? So I think that basically we can't do anything until we see what our insurance situation is, whether we would be covered by the town's liability insurance, how much it would cover, and what kind of situ, would it cover this kind of relationship with the Historical Society?
I, I wanted to ask Carolyn, or anyone else for that matter, we have had artwork in the meeting room, which we, we have, and at one point, one of the pieces was taken, was stolen, and I don't really remember what the resolution of that was, where we, did we pay something to compensate the artist, or I know we had to, we had discussions about security cameras at the time, that kind of prompted that conversation.
I, I don't remember what the resolution was either. I don't have any recollection of making a payment. But I don't...
So we have a letter drafted that goes to each artist that comes, and it's not a legal, you know, it's just a letter that says, you know, it talks about marketing, it talks about displaying items, but it also says, by putting your items in our meeting room and hanging them up on the wall, you will are, we are not liable for any theft or damage. Like, you're taking that chance that, you know, there might be theft or damage, and that the library is not liable.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if the, if, if it looks like we would not be covered by the town's insurance policy, whatever, whatever they have, if, if, if the town has something that would cover this kind of situation, you know, then we would maybe have to consider going back to the Historical Society and saying that the agreement has to specifically disavow a bailment relationship. And that, you know, this is a casual relationship that's just for the purposes of sharing, or whatever the language would be.
Yeah, I, I don't think either one of us, Catherine, or, or I, or Megan for that matter, I feel like they're dealing in good faith. It's not as if they're trying to, you know, they're actually trying to make it easier for us, but at the same time, protecting their interests. So I just, our feeling, my feeling is, we just have to be sure what of our interests are actually being protected.
Right. I agree.
Okay, I agree as well. So I will figure out what the town has for insurance, and I will work with you at the next meeting about what that would mean for us.
Sounds good.
Okay, and very lastly, and most excitingly, we are going back to our normal operations March 1st. If we, you know, find ourselves in a situations that children's programs need to go outside, we will do our best to accommodate that, and, you know, everybody will have to wear their snowsuit. But we'll be going into the room that we share with RAC for a lot of our larger children's programs, and we are looking forward to resuming all of those things.
Yay.
Yay. And that is the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Megan. So that brings us to Bronwyn.
Hi. Trying to get it all written down. Mostly my report is about money coming in instead of money going out. We had a couple of good things happen that are all on my reports. I don't have to go through all of it, but the CLT takeout has been transferred, and so we are back in flushing that account again, which is good because this, with this warrant, we have now expended all of our materials budget for the year from the town. So we still have a large amount to spend in materials to meet the requirements, and so the $70,000 will, will be mostly spent to pay for the books that we need to buy. To stay certified. And then we also were, we had a reimbursement from the Friends for over $4,000 for our museum passes and our movie licenses and things like that. So that goes back into the gift account, and that makes the gift account have a pretty large balance as well, which is, which is great. And then just some other deposits, and our Music Circus annual grant donation came in as well. So in other years, we've had to apply for a grant and sort of specifically say what we're going to use it for. This year, it was very vague. It said, what was it mainly? Something about COVID related for, to make up for loss of COVID funds, basically. So essentially, we could use it for whatever we need it for.
How much was that for?
$2,500. They used to give us $5,000, but in the last couple of years, I'm surprised that they're even able to to give us what they have, because they really haven't had much programming at all because of COVID. So... And then as far, I'm sorry?
Just a quick question. I'm sure somebody writes a letter thanking them, but it'd be great if, if they mentioned in that letter, we recognize that it's been a very difficult time for you, and so we all really appreciate it.
We always do send them a, a thank you and try to, I, I mean, I think that they have to do the, the grant, so it's not necessarily completely out of the goodness of their heart. It's an agreement with the town. But that being said, it's really appreciated, and we do always try to send a letter that, that acknowledges, you know...
Well, I know, it's an obvious suggestion, but just...
Does that go in the newsletter from the library that that grant was received, or is that not really something we do?
We do. They do ask in their, in their letter when they send the check to, you know, be sure to recognize them in anything that, that we do. If we specifically use the funds for something, we would, we wouldn't recognize that, that it came from them. So, you know.
I have a, I have a question about the Caroline Blanton Thayer trust donation. Sarah, do you, do you remember, like, from when that first started, what the arrangement was? Do, do you know any of the history of that? Because we, we've now gotten at least $100,000 from them. And so we were thinking about maybe publicizing that a little bit and like putting them on the philanthropist line of our thing, but we weren't sure if that was the right thing to do, and, and we were, we wanted to do a little sleuthing behind the scenes. I didn't know if you, if there was any information from when that first started coming in back in 2011. I think you were maybe on there then, but I'm not sure.
I was. I, I don't remember. I maybe I'll give Patience a call and ask her. She might have...
I'll ask her. I'll ask her. Thanks. Just figured I'd try. Thanks.
No, sorry.
Didn't mean to interrupt. Thanks, Bronwyn.
That's fine. We do get a letter from their, their attorney that maybe we could reach out to them for the, for the Thayers. If you, if Patience doesn't have any memory of it, I do have their contact information. And then as far as the bills, really pretty much, they're self-explanatory. Subscription renewals, materials, usual supplies. If there's anything in particular, though, I'm happy to answer questions. Anyone has anything?
Not that I'm worried about it, but it was interesting that there was a $100 thing coming out of the book for Megan. I didn't know what that was related to. Usually the book is all like Midwest tape and...
She paid for the yearbook from the school, the high school, for, you have to pay in advance, and so she put it on her credit card, and it's now being reimbursed.
It comes out of...
Elaine likes to have them, and they, we have them in the historical room.
That's awesome.
All right, so if we don't have any other questions, then why don't we vote on the bills?
I'm moved to pay the bills.
Second.
All right, Steve Brown? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, Steve Brown.
Sarah Peace? Elaine Breslow?
Aye.
Brooke Jewell?
Aye.
Megan Brynsey?
Aye.
Carolyn Coffey?
Aye.
And Catherine Harvey, aye. So the bills carried. All right, so...
Procedure, I have a quick question.
Yep.
Is "aye" the proper term to use when you're making a motion like that?
I mean, I think so.
Okay.
I think as long as we all agree that it means yes, then yes.
I just didn't know. I thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
We can ask our research, our librarian about, to look into Robert's Rules, and we can confirm.
Yeah. I mean, I've always heard it used in everything, every sort of board or body that I've participated in that adhered to Robert's Rules. That's, was always said, but I think as long as the parties agree what it means, you could probably say anything.
Aye.
So, okay, so I guess that means it is my turn. And I don't have a lot. One thing that I wanted to share with the group... One thing that I wanted to share with the group and I, I was hoping that um. That Catherine O'Callaghan would be with us this evening, but she is not. Um. But she did share with me and Megan um, that she does not intend to seek reelection. I had planned for her, I thought that she would be. Saying this to all of you, but um, and as much as she did. Let us know that before tonight's meeting, I think it was her intention for um, for us to know that and I bring it up so that. You know, if, if we, if any of us is aware of people who would like to get involved in the library, um, and anyone they'd like to reach out to. Um, that's something to be thinking about. Um, so, and let me think, what else I have. Um. Oh, I know what else I have. Um, I wondered if uh, Carolyn and Elaine and Brooke and Steve could talk to us about the, their most recent meeting on the outdoor. Space planning, which I did not make it to that meeting. So if you could fill us in on where we stand on that, that would be great.
Do you want me to do it?
Sure, I was gonna say, don't all start at once, but.
Kinda, kinda hard to ask four people.
Yeah, yeah.
So uh, we met um, last week um. Just to get our ducks in a row and see, make sure that we were aligned in our vision for what we all wanted to accomplish. With the outdoor programming space so that when we were meeting with landscape architects, we um. We were unified in our thoughts and not um, wasting their, or you know, using up more of their time than need be and therefore making it more expensive than it need be. And um, basically, it, we were very much aligned, which was great. Um. You know, priorities included being flexible, accessible and community oriented, having shade, um, having space for. Uh, large groups for children's programming, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy plus people. But also having maybe picnic tables or something so that book groups could meet, you know, smaller groups could meet, so having two different kinds of spaces. Um, having it be uh, natural feeling um, with grass, not uh, total hardscape, total pavilion sort of feel. Having a connection with the building so that it feels like it is part of the library. Um, and um, having some sort of screening uh, to Sawyer Street. Um, perhaps uh, perhaps a wall. Um, and if, if we do that sort of thing, maybe on the backside, even a sign that says Paul Pratt Memorial Library, that sort of thing. So it's, um, it was great meeting. We were all aligned. We looked at some of the pictures uh, that um, that Amy Martin did send uh, a little thing. Um, with, are you thinking about this, that, or the other thing with, with pictures and um, we coalesced on one of the uh, visions that she had sent. Um, I did end up uh, sharing the list of uh, thoughts that we had uh, put together, the summary with Amy. Um, and I spoke with her today and she's like, so are we moving forward? And um. I, I told her that uh, we needed a proposal from her and so it was kind of up to her, like. If she was ready to give us a proposal based on the information that she had, then that would be great. Um, if she needed more information from us uh, before she could do that, then that. So um, she, she did not feel the need to have the follow-up Zoom that she had originally asked for because she thought that the summarized points that we sent her. Uh, covered a lot of that. Um, but she does want to get uh, a site plan. Um, I talked to, she want, talked to me about kind of our long-term vision for the building. Uh, because she wants to make sure that whatever is designed uh, doesn't compete with that, but would be um, compatible with, it would, would, you know. Not have to be undone if we're able to do that, that sort of thing. Um, so she wants a site plan, so I have to try and see if I can unearth that. If you stumble across it, Megan or Bronwyn, let me know. Um, but anyway, uh, so that, that was, that was that. Feel free to. Add anything, Steve, Brooke and Elaine and Megan.
No, I think you summed it up. I wonder if um, so the rest of the group could get a general visual, like some of those um. Pictures that she had sent out. There was one that we all sort of really tuned into in light and I wonder if it'd be helpful for the rest of the. Trustees to see that, just to get an idea of what, what we were talking about. I don't know if, do you have that?
I, I have it. If Megan will let me share or maybe she can pull it up.
Megan, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, I'm talking myself. Um, you, you should be able to share. Everybody has um. The, but I can look in my email too and find it.
I have it. Um. Let me just share my screen. Can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so, so she sent this um, that she asked us to um. And so we, we, we looked at these, you know, three words and picked flexible, accessible and community oriented. And then of these pictures, I believe it was this one.
Yep.
That we coalesced on. Um.
Can you blow that up?
Good question. I don't, I don't think I can. Let me see, actually what I can do is this.
So what we, what appealed to us about that one in, in particular was that. Um, it could take advantage of the slope that already exists. So we could be creating, you know, a soft, a hardscape within a softscape. And it also allowed, as, as you can see, you know, obviously these are, you know, this is just a suggestion, but we liked also the fact that as Carolyn mentioned. There was the flexibility that we could have smaller groupings set up as well.
I think I also liked this sort of, like if you're sitting. Here, like that there's grass and wide spaces um, to walk by. Um, you know, if, if this, sorry, my Adobe does this.
Well, then with that, with that big grassy space, you can put like lawn chairs. People, you don't sit on the concrete step. Like kids wouldn't mind, but maybe, you know, there's other groups of people that would wanna bring their chairs and sit and listen, so.
It's, you know, it doesn't need to be, you know, that wide, but it, what's nice is if somebody's sitting here and. Uh, somebody new arrives and there's an open space, they can walk by without people having to stand up and get out of the way, you know, if it's too tight.
Right. So that's. We were trying to brainstorm ideas on how to cover that also to um.
Yeah.
A flexible cover that you could take, take down easily if there's a storm, put it back up for the shade. So. It's um, still brainstorming on that. And I'm sure Anne Martin has lots of ideas too.
And the need for the cover was based on the fact that it's very, very hot in the summer.
Right. Right. And then with the picnic benches down there, um, picnic tables, then they could also have a umbrella. So if you're having a small, like, small book group. They'd also have the cover from the shade or cover from, you know, drizzle or something, so.
And if we ever wanted to expand to have programs with the senior center. Or um, we had folks uh, coming through um, the pathway from the common. Um, from some of the um, schools and churches, they could, they could use the facilities.
Hi, Mary Lou.
Hi.
Yay, Mary Lou.
Waiting for a quarrel.
No, we were okay, but I'm glad you could join us.
Painful, absolutely painful. Anyway. I need to go visit Megan, I think, because every time. I try and get on, a different kind of page comes up on my Zoom app. And finally a page came up that I thought, ah, Carolyn had gave, given me some keywords. Those are Carolyn's words. And here I am.
We don't have to do this too much longer, but if, please come in, we can uh, bring your device and we'll see if we can navigate through some of the different scenarios.
I'll, I'll take two seconds just to update you, Mary Lou, because we were talking about the outdoor space, which I know is very important to you and this, this was the um. Photo that the group coalesced around. Um, can you see it?
I can.
Um. Uh, having kind of the amphitheater-y type space here, but also having some picnic table space for those who might not want to. Sit on benches or for smaller groups that might want to meet for a um, book group or a smaller program. So.
Hmm, hmm. Can those, um, can that amphitheater there, how many will it seat? Like, could. Could you do an impromptu kind of play there, you know, or could?
Um, our, our goal is to make sure that we can accommodate, you know, storytime and um, you know, the, the larger children's program. So, you know, having, being able to have. Seven, you know, if, we might not have actual seating for seventy people, but um, you know, we'd have seating for. Dozens and then, you know, other people can obviously fill around if.
Right, right.
If, we have to see, A, what the space can accommodate and B, what our budget can accommodate.
Do we have a price on it?
Not yet.
Megan, didn't you say we have some programs that could get up to a hundred and twenty?
Yeah. But we're not gonna.
Yeah, I think our hope is kind of all the seating together would accommodate that size crowd and maybe, you know. Also, maybe families might want to sit on the grass too. So I think if we had a program that size, it would just have to take over the whole space. Um, which fine, I think would be a fun setup.
I just think it's important to, not limited to fifty or sixty or seventy, uh, when we talk with Amy, because. There is a demand for, for larger numbers.
I agree. The more, you know, the more spaces that we can come up with, um, the better for me.
And the town, there, there are town groups that could also utilize it if we had more spaces. Um, you know, we don't have any place in town for there to be any outdoor theater.
I agree, it could be.
Not, not that that's our job. That certainly is not the, our highest priority, but if it just means adding another row. Um. If it, if it would. If it would do it, but it might not even make a difference, you know, you know.
If you think about the width at that point, you could easily make it um, larger and still uh, comply with Carolyn's suggestion that. The, the levels be such that you don't have to constantly move people aside as you walk along the circumference.
It's beautiful to look at. It's beautiful. Very exciting.
It is exciting. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a great project. It, it seems like we're all sort of on the same page and I think it's gonna turn out great. Um, yeah, so I guess where we stand on this, it sounds like um, Amy's gonna put something together for us and you had. Where did we end up with um, Chris Kennedy? Was he gonna. Ballpark something for us as well? No. Okay.
I mean, we could, we could ask him to, but we felt like this, uh, when we met with him, we felt like this was um. More of an accommodation than it was like his bailiwick, something that he'd be excited to do. Um, so we were. We thought Amy was more um, enthused and uh, into it. So.
And I have one other contact um, to reach out to uh, the contractor who did the project at NDA, who I have not spoken to yet, but I can reach out to them as well and um. And see if they wanna come and see the space or, you know, give us sort of their, you know. General idea about it and, you know, we'll see how that relates to where we stand with Amy and whether it interests us or, you know, if we're good with that or, or where we stand. So. I will um, I will get on that this week.
Really, now, we needed the three, three different quotes, right? Is Chris someone that we can?
Yeah, we, we just need to talk to three different people. We don't need three different proposals. We just need to talk to three different people. So.
Chris is one of them. That's a check. Yeah.
Correct.
Good.
Good. All right. Anything else on the outdoor space?
Good job.
Agreed.
I think you forgot to tell the most important part, Carolyn, that about the wall with the name and the bushes on the side. You seem really excited about that. I think it's, and so people would see it coming down Sawyer.
Yeah.
Um, a tasteful plaque. Um, and it would kind of like.
A low, a low wall.
A low, yeah, a low wall, a low wall.
I love it. Sounds great. Okay, so I think that then brings us to um, the CLT.
Uh, the CLT um, met last night and um. The, the current balance after uh, they made the payout uh, in January of seventy thousand dollars and the current balance in the endowment is two million, one fifty after that payout. At, at twelve thirty-one, it was um, two million, two, two twenty-five. So, um. So uh, that's terrific. Um, there was discussion in the Investment Advisory Committee about um, allocation of equity. After the payout there down to, after the selling equities to make the payout there down to eighty-one percent equities. Um, and nine percent fixed income. Uh, there was discussion about having more fixed income, but with. Um, interest rates expected to increase sometime. Um, now is not necessarily the time to go into fixed income investments. So um, the bottom line was they were happy with uh, where they are currently. Um, in their next quarterly meeting, they are going to discuss some other um, investment vehicles like uh, collateralized loan obligations and high yield bonds. And they're also gonna look at growth versus value and discuss whether or not they think that, you know, some of the technology stocks that have historically been considered growth. Are still considered growth when they're so enormous. Um. We're uh, gonna update our um, webpage on the library website. Uh, we talked about nominating committee. Um, we do need, um, because Catherine O'Callaghan is not gonna run for trustee again. Um, she, she has agreed to stay on the CLT board, but she will no longer be a trustee representative on the board. So we need another trustee to come on because we have to have two. So um, if anyone is interested, please let me know. And if I don't hear from anyone, please take my phone call. And uh, we, we did talk about uh, some ideas for bringing in new people as well. We will have to um, elect a slate in May. Uh, we also talked about doing some sort of a recognition event for Bob Riley, who has run the Investment Advisory Committee for fifteen years. And um, we thought that would be uh, both appropriate to recognize his contributions and also um, tangentially a nice way of. Building um, awareness of the CLT.
Yeah, it's worthwhile to point out that just a few years ago, the total assets are one-three. So.
He's done a great job.
Yeah, Ri- Riley and team.
Yeah. Of which Steve Brown is a member.
Yeah, but not a contributing member.
So that's, that's uh, that's it for the CLT. Um, there was one other building committee thing, um, I think, which I, I don't know if now is the right time. Is that? Cause that's usually under the president's report, right?
Oh.
But since I have the floor, uh, which was the recovery, the recovering of the chairs um, near the periodicals room. Um, uh, we talked about this last fall. We picked a fabric and I, I was finally able to get a uh, purchase order from um. The folks who are helping us do it and we're trying to get the timing from the upholsterer, but um. We, I talked to Megan. I don't know if you wanna talk about the, how to pay for it and everything, but, but this was the fabric. It's, it's um, akin to what we. Um, covered some of the other ones, only. It's, it's um akin to what we um covered some of the other ones, only it's got a little bit more texture, but it's, it's totally wipeable. It's got, I think it's like a five hundred thousand rubs, which is how you measure um, commercial fabric. So you know, five hundred thousand times someone can sit on it or rub their arm, rub the armrest and everything. So hopefully it lasts a good long time and um, it's obviously, you know, stain resistant and that sort of thing. Um, but it's gonna be thirty-eight hundred dollars to recover the um four chairs.
Um, so budget-wise, I think some of you heard Bronwyn and I talking about uh the budget before the meeting started, but um, budget-wise, uh, we have, it's so our appropriated budget, so all of our budget lines together, we have uh, we're in a very good place, um, especially that we're halfway through the year. Um, so I feel strongly that this is actually a great time for us to pay for reupholstering the chairs. Sorry, but um, because we have um a lot of um allocated funds that we are not using right now. We don't have a plan for. Um, so we do have some money in our maintenance line, um, which, so it's about nineteen hundred dollars in our maintenance line last time I looked. Um, and we have a lot of, I think around, Bronwyn, correct me if I'm wrong. I can't remember if this is appropriated or if this is our total. We have about seven thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars in our um, technology line. So we have plenty of money to get this project done. It's just a matter of um, the fact that it's in the technology line and maybe that line doesn't make sense for reupholstering. But at the end of the year, it all just comes down for the finance director to the bottom line. Um, and we can explain that we use some of the money outside of that, that specific budget line um to get this done.
So do we need to take a vote for that?
I think it's a large enough expense that we should do that. Yeah.
Yeah, that seems wise.
I think that would be great. And I don't, I don't know if we can um, I don't know what the upholsterer's timeline is. You know, obviously if she could start tomorrow, we'd love for her to take the chairs tomorrow. I'm guessing however, it's, well, it's a two, one to two weeks to get the fabric anyway. But um, if she were able to start before the um, you know, before a month is out, rather than waiting for the next warrant to put it on. Um, I don't know if this one can be amended or if we should just wait or h- how it's best to do that.
Yeah, why don't we wait and hear back from the upholsterer then and then we can vote when we are ready to pay for it.
We can go ahead and vote. It's just a question of warrant, whether it goes on.
Well, Catherine, if Catherine can come in and sign the bill after the vote's taken, since she's.
Oh, we could do a separate warrant.
Do that.
I could, I could also write a purchase order. Sometimes they'll take that. Um, and that just uh essentially holds the money, so it can't be spent on anything else. And then I can put it on the next warrant when the invoice is in. A lot of vendors will take a purchase order uh in lieu of a check.
That seems sensible.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's do that. Okay, so then we are basically voting to appropriate thirty-eight hundred dollars and to write a purchase order for the recovering of the chairs in the period, in the space leading into the periodicals room. And which we will put on a warrant when we are ready to pay for it, when they present back the purchase order. Is that about capture it? Okay, do I hear a motion? All right, do we need a roll call on that? It was pretty specific. Okay, Elaine Breslow. Oh, you're muted.
Elaine Breslow, aye.
Brooke Chul.
Brooke Chul, aye.
Carolyn Coffey.
Hi.
Mary Lou Lawrence. You're muted. Still muted. Hold on.
Aye.
Okay, now we got you. Okay, Steve Brown.
Aye.
Uh, Megan Brindsey.
Aye.
It looks like we lost Sarah Pease momentarily, but that's okay. We have a quorum. Catherine Harvey, aye. So motion carries. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. All right, so then I think all we have left is the Friends. So the Friends met last week. Um, the appeal is up to uh about twenty-four and a half. Um, we're down about ten thousand from last year still, so we're still sort of sussing out, you know, the reason for that and whether or not there was a mail outage and all the things that we talked about um in last month's meeting. Um, and we are considering some kind of a follow-up to the appeal this year because of that shortfall. Although, you know, we're, we're, we're fine, you know, our accounts are fine. We have plenty of money to, to pay for the programming that we would, um, you know, that we would wanna do for the year, but um, that's something that we have sort of tabled for the time being, that I think we're gonna probably take up again, maybe next month or in the spring, think about sending some kind of follow-up uh correspondence. And probably targeting donors who have been consistent, annual donors who didn't, you know, who didn't give this year for whatever reason, uh, maybe just like another, a little reminder or something along those lines. Um, on the book sale, we are, we continue to be doing really well from the Bay State Books and we are gonna be adding um another bin, we think. Um, the gentleman who owns the, the real estate where uh Stop and Shop is, has basically agreed to let us put a, a bin there, which I think is gonna be not next to the building, but you know, sort of closer to the road. So you know, it's be visible from three A, um, and you know, easily accessible for people to pull in and um, and give more books. And um, I know that we've probably talked a little bit about this and some of you who have wanted to drop off books have noticed that the bin has been filling up with regularity, um, which is, is great. Um, and uh, the other good development in this area is that we have just recently acquired a key for the bin that we have behind the library. So we will now going forward be able to open the bin and look through what's in the bin and pull out anything that we would like to keep for the, for our inventory for the ongoing book sale. So that is a big problem solver for us because we were sort of struggling to figure out how we were going to have these two things coexist. Um, so we're hoping that that's gonna help us improve our inventory and improve our bottom line on the ongoing book sale in addition to the um additional funds that we're getting from, from the bin, which has been great. Um, so let's see what else. So the main thing that we um focused on in this meeting is approving new bylaws. So we recently engaged um, some lawyers to rewrite our bylaws and um our, our articles of organization basically came up, and maybe I've mentioned this before, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but uh, because we discovered that there was a filing that we were supposed to have been doing with the attorney general that had maybe never been done. Um, and it should be done in order to maintain our tax filing status as a five oh one C three. So um, the lawyers are bringing us all up to date on that. And in part of that process, we've updated our bylaws, which were very much outdated and not really reflective of the way we were operating at this time. Um, I think they had been written in nineteen sixty-eight or it was a long time ago. And the Friends was a much different organization at that time. It involved a lot more people and so on. So um, that, I think we've pretty much cleared up any questions that we had and sort of agreed on what we wanted to do um, on that. So the lawyers will be finalizing that for us and we will, um, I'm sure be approving that at the next meeting. Um, the one uh development that I wanted to report about that or the one change is that um, previously, because I had two roles as a trustee and also uh being on the Friends board and I was on the Friends board be, before I became a trustee. Um, so I had been sort of maintaining those two roles simultaneously this whole time. I had consulted at some point the trustee's handbook and the guidelines that I think are provided by the state, which um, address the inherent conflict of interest that exists in having those two roles. And the guidelines basically said that a trustee serving on a Friends board should not have an officer role. So I, at that point, stepped away from corresponding secretary and all of the, all of the duties associated with that, uh, which is basically writing thank you notes. So, so I was very comfortable with delegating that to somebody else. Um, but what we have learned now is that I should not be a voting member of the Friends. So I will be just strictly a trustee liaison with the Friends for the time being. And um, and so that, that's one notable change. Um, but other than that, it's, it's really just sort of, as I said, updating to, to reflect the way things are operating at this time rather than how they were operating when the, when the Friends was originally incorporated um many years ago. So um, I think that is about it for the Friends. So I think, any questions on the Friends? Then that just brings us to new business, of which I have none. Does anybody have anything they wanted to raise? No? All right. Well, in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second? All right. In that case, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Hey, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Catherine, thanks Megan, thanks Bronwyn.